Amy, however, she was trying to attend this meeting via Zoom.
Amy, can you hear us?
Your sound.
I was just dealing with that with my friends in their eighties purging. We haven't gotten that far from doing outside work so far.
Okay. Well, it's a nice day finally. After all the rain we had.
Amy.
I wish it was like this every day. Fifty five, fifty five night, seventy five day.
Perfect.
Got going, took a break every once in a while. It was in the nineties and the heat index was five.
Yeah, I was, yeah.
And it was beautiful.
Oh, five was beautiful.
And nobody was there.
Via Zoom, they can. There are seven planning commissioners, correct? So we need one more for quorum, so worst case scenario. We just can't take action tonight. I can still do the presentation, CNET can record it, so at least we have it. And the other planning commissioners can go back and watch.
There weren't any action. Let's see if you like it further.
Jenna, are we ready?
We are ready. Right now, we just have manager and CNET on, so I'm gonna keep this down here.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. The Patent Township Planning Commission for July first, 2024. Does anyone have anything to add to the posted meeting agenda? Okay. Hearing none. We will forego approving the minutes from last month because we do not have a quorum of four members.
I think this is Bill.
Oh, Bill's coming, okay, we can, we can go back to that. We will now go to number three, which is public comments. Does anyone on Zoom or in person have any public comments that they would like to speak to, to the planning commission that's not on the posted meeting agenda?
No.
Okay. Hearing none. We will revert back to line item two now that we have a quorum. And we will ask for a motion to approve the minutes from the June third, 2024 meeting. Do I have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It is approved. Okay, now we will go to item four, which is attainable housing presentation and discussion. The Center Region Planning Agency is going to present a presentation on attainable housing in Patent Township. Housing is a fundable human need that provides our community with the social stability by ensuring diverse socioeconomic backgrounds. Center County and the township have both completed housing needs study within the past few years. As part of the planning commission's work, staff will highlight things that resulted from these past planning efforts and provide current data on the housing environment. The purpose of the presentation is to discuss the significance of attainable housing in guiding future development and growth in the community. We will look at and explore past plans, define different types of attainable housing, and provide current data that documents the need for attainable housing locally.
Okay. Much better.
Make sure everyone at home can see. Okay, doing our best, we got a lot of light in this room. All right, so today we are gonna be talking about attainable housing in Patent Township. So we have Missy Scoon over here, she is with Center County Housing and Land Trust. Patent Township, Ferguson Township, and College Township all have MOUs with Center County Housing and Land Trust to manage any of the units that may come online from the ordinances that these municipalities have in place. So Missy, you wanna just go into generally? Because Missy and I, we like to have a line on ordinance and admin and administration. Sometimes we'll go back and forth, but there's, it bleeds.
It does, it does bleed a lot, so, nice to meet everyone. I've been affiliated with the Affordable Housing Initiative in Patent Township for a lot of years. Long before the Malat Trail Park was converted into the Trader Joe's Plaza and the Woody Press property became our first flagship development here in Patton, which is top in place. Fourteen permanently affordable homes right here in Patent Township. So I've been, I've been involved with affordable, now we say attainable, housing for about thirty-five years. So it's a passion of mine. I've been working behind the scenes with a lot of folks in Patent Township over a lot of years, talking about how can we address affordability here, what can we do to partner more? So this is just the next step in that relationship. When manager park has reached out and said, we want to start talking about codifying some things and making things easier for people who, who want to live here because Patton is a place for all. So I appreciate your time tonight, and this is really Jenna's, Jenna's round tonight because this is, this is more of the technical planning side that I am here to offer support and answers and, and like she said, there's a lot of bleed over with us.
All right. All right, so, I always like to start just so I can get a gauge of the room. What does attainable housing mean to you? And depending on the audience, I've seen that change dramatically. So for me, it's housing that is affordable for everyone in your community. No matter what their salary is, where their circumstances may be, it's having that roof over your head and it is affordable for you. So you'll hear me missing, I'm gonna do my best only because I am so used to calling this workforce housing. This is, we're gonna be calling attainable housing because there is a new bill coming down and there may be some money is being put through to D, through D C E D to municipalities that have these attainable housing initiatives in place, whether it's in their zoning ordinance, S A L D O, et cetera. So we're trying to line up with that if that bill were to be codified. So, we're gonna start with the existing housing studies that we have in place today. As you all are familiar, in 2021, we did Patent Township Housing Task Force Report and that resulted in four big to-dos out of that plan. So designate attainable housing as township work priority and community focus for 2022. Support future countywide and regional housing studies and deepen collaboration with regional housing service providers. Provide funding for the First Time Home Buyers Fund, Habitat for Humanity of Greater Center County, and the Center County Housing and Land Trust to specifically benefit Patent Township residents. And then adopt township planning and zoning approaches that support attainable housing. And that is what we will be heading down the line to do this year. We are looking to have a joint board and planning commission meeting. It's looking to be in September to start discussing what that ordinance looks like for Patent Township because it isn't one size fits all. Every community is different and it's trying to figure out what the needs are and how they can be addressed for your community. Additionally, we have a Center County Housing Needs Assessment that was done most recently in 2023. This involved the entire county, planners in the Center Region, housing, all of the housing initiatives out there. Part of this study, which was a big ask of Center Region, we asked a special focus on Center Region just because we are very different in comparison to the rest of the county. So that was completed in 2023. In that study, there was a housing gap analysis. So this analysis determines the mismatch between household income and the level of affordability of housing units occupied by households based on their income tier. So up on the board here, this is the Center Region owner households. So this is identifying the gap and of housing units for these households in those AMI ranges for the entire Center Region. So what we're doing with these ordinances, essentially, there's been a need identified with all of these plans for homeownership, and this plan also identified the renter households as well. And it identified the gap of that missing housing stock needed based on what is in place right now. So, we are going to hear a lot about affordable housing, workforce housing, et cetera. There are different definitions in HUD. So as we start this process, talk about this while, and I'm guilty of it too. I may use affordable, workforce, attainable interchangeably, they are different in their definitions. So for HUD, affordable housing is generally defined as housing on which the occupant is paying no more than thirty percent of their gross income for housing costs, and that includes utilities, H O A, et cetera. So that's the mortgage, taxes, all of it. So the workforce housing, that's housing built to serve families that have income levels between the true affordable housing options and market rate housing. So it's typically falling right now between the sixty to one-twenty area median income. So they are the middle income households that seem to have gotten left behind in the housing market, essentially. So then you will hear area median income thrown out there. So this is a midpoint of region's income distribution calculated by gross income, so before taxes. So this means that half of the households in the region earn more than the median and half earn less than the median. So this number is determined by HUD, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. They calculate these numbers every year. And that is used to determine the eligibility for attainable housing programs typically in most ordinances. It's easier if you can tie it to a federal or state program. So you'll see that, and in our future presentations, we're gonna outline in a table of other regional ordinances that are in place, the AMIs that they are serving, just so everyone can get a feel for what everyone is trying to provide for based on the municipality that they're in. So this number is updated every year by HUD. A lot of municipalities last year went through amending ordinances if they had them on the books because the AMI for HUD jumped so dramatically last year, I believe it was eighteen thousand dollars.
Eighteen thousand two hundred, they went up.
And in the housing community, you, we've never seen that. So it was a big red flag for us because we had ordinances that were trying to help eighty to one-twenty. And when that, the new numbers came out, it dramatically changed everything. And for us to recognize these ordinance aren't helping the true workforce of our area anymore. So we saw a lot of municipalities, College Township, they're currently going through amending their ordinance. AMI included in that, as well as a few other things that they're tinkering around with. Ferguson had attempted that all of, last half of last year, and it was voted down in January. I believe they're picking that back up again, and Missy will be helping them with that as well because they have that MOU with Center County Housing and Land Trust. So we have a lot of municipalities in the region. That key, that tie that I like to point to is Center County Housing and Land Trust because we all share that MOU. And for me and Missy, it's, and I say we because I also sit on the land trust. We're trying to get these ordinances as close as we can because when you are on the administrative side of things, it's really hard to tell someone who needs affordable housing, well, you can afford to live in Patent Township, but you can't afford to live in College Township when they're just need affordable housing. So we're trying to get these ordinances as close as we can, recognizing that we do have elected officials of different municipalities and they have their own wants and needs and beliefs. And we're trying to see if we can get these as close as we can overall. And that really falls into that AMI that we'll be discussing here today. So State College Metropolitan Statistical Area, so this is our AMI area. It's essentially Center County. So it's kind of terrible if you live outside of Center Region because our numbers are impacting everyone in Snowshoe and all these other areas. And it's kind of not great for us because people who are living in Center Region, it's taking into account those numbers from Snowshoe and everywhere else. So, but for us, Center County MSA, that is the entire county. For 2024, our AMI is one hundred eight thousand two hundred dollars.
And that's for a family of four?
Family of four. And as we go through these presentations, you will, I will either provide an example of a one-person household because it's easy to wrap your head around one person, this is the salary I make, can I, what can I afford? And then I'll always give the example of a four-person household, which is your typical nuclear family, mom, dad, kids, et cetera. So those are the examples I like to stick with because they do, as we'll see, change and they can be confusing. All right, so this is kind of, we call this the AMI umbrella. So it includes all of the percentages in AMI and all of the areas that support those incomes. So we have this less than thirty percent AMI that is extremely low income, that's supportive services, that is housing transitions. A lot of the support that the borough of State College provides for majority of the region. Then we have the thirty percent to fifty percent AMI, so that's considered by HUD very low income. So that is our affordable housing. There are still a good amount of programs out there, either through the county or the borough of State College for individuals making that income level. And as you start to get up to the top of this umbrella, the fifty to one eight, or fifty to eighty, that is where you'll see a lot of programs drop off. And there kind of just is no help out there for anyone making sixty percent AMI and all the way over to the other side at one-twenty percent AMI. So you will see that College Township's ordinance is heavily focused on that side of the umbrella as what is and hopefully will be Ferguson's to maintain that side of the umbrella. And it's really just recognizing that there are a ton of programs out there for individuals making less than sixty percent and there's just really nothing for the upper tier of that to the workforce, the, to get them into affordable housing for them. So that is really the goal of a lot of the townships. We recognize that the borough is a different animal. They are an entitlement community, which means that the federal government will give them money. They don't need to ask for it. Their, their residents are so poor that they are an entitlement community per HUD. So they get a lot of money that is just given to them and they are required to meet very strict guidelines on how they spend that money. It has to, so much of it needs to go to households at thirty percent AMI and fifty. And that's really the, in my experience, the confusion with the development community. They are, their experiences with the borough and meeting those federal requirements. And when you get over into the townships, because we are not entitlement communities, we are creating this ordinance to reflect the needs of that municipality and it's the elected body's choice of where we want to help because we are not accepting federal money to do this. This is on the development community to provide typically. So that is the beauty of a lot of the ordinances that the townships around the borough have. So, oh, this thing is off. Okay, so I did some research just for some State College jobs that are available. So as you can see here, looking at that umbrella, we have fast food worker making about twenty-four thousand a year, all the way up to registered nurse making eighty thousand a year. And how those jobs are falling, and this is from Indeed, I believe I looked this up maybe three weeks ago. So it's pretty accurate, this is a one-person household. So in this situation, you can imagine that one teacher making forty-three thousand dollars a year, she is below the sixty percent AMI for her household size. And then you can see as you go on, we have police officers, a social worker, registered nurse, plumber, and just where they're falling on that umbrella that we just saw. So then we have the four-person household. Again, we maintained the same salaries that we were able to find. We added in local government department head just to grab that hundred twenty percent AMI. So this is a four-person household. So this is mom, dad, two kids, et cetera. And that is where one person making that salary would fall in AMI. So granted, yes, the wife could have a husband, he could also have a salary supplement. So this is really just a one person. That is the breadwinner of that family, looking at this chart. So then, we're gonna look at this, this, I like to slice and dice these by sixty I like to slice and dice these by sixty percent, eighty percent, one twenty percent AMI. So you'll see this top part, this is your one-person household. At sixty percent AMI, this person makes forty-five thousand dollars, four hundred, or forty-five, four fifty. Per HUD, they can afford a monthly payment of eleven thirty-six. So that is including, as we saw before, utilities. That is including, if it is a home, HOA, et cetera. And then below that, one seventy, seven fifty, that is the house price that they can afford per HUD, per their AMI. So that's assuming a thirty-year mortgage at seven percent with that assumption. I don't know about you, I don't know of any houses that sell in Center Region for a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So then you can see that continues on, the eighty percent tier, sixty thousand dollars. They can afford fifteen hundred in their monthly payments, whether that's mortgage, rent, et cetera. I would say that fifteen hundred for rent is right around where we are for market rate right now. And they can afford a house that is two hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars, and it continues on. So below that, again, the comparison of that four-person household, mom, dad, two kids, and just where they fall on that in comparison. So I grabbed those salaries that we just saw before. So this is your teacher, one-person household, they make forty-three thousand a year. Social worker, fifty-three thousand, they're not hitting the eighty percent. Then we have registered nurse, they make eighty thousand a year, and they aren't even getting close to the one twenty. And then we have, this is a social worker supporting her family. They are below sixty percent, so you can see how they're moving over depending on the size of that family. Registered nurse is also down below eighty percent. And then the local government department head, if it was just one person, breadwinner, they're not hitting that one twenty. And to blow a hole in all of this, this is the average sold price of a house in Center County as of June seventeenth. So you can see what we're up against in this affordability. So this all, this information is very helpful when trying to figure out the AMI for the ordinances and who the municipalities are trying to help with that as part of the discussion. And that is it for today. Today, I really wanted to provide information. We will dig deeper into these ordinances, how you can tailor them to the individual municipality. But that was just general information of identifying, A, a need for Center County's plan, for Patton Township's housing needs plan, and then just looking at the reality of what we are faced with today in the market. So, are there any questions?
So our next step would be to have our joint meeting in September?
Yep, yeah. So for me, coming on new, I want to make sure, because Patton has had many planners in the past, everyone is using different language, et cetera. So I will warn you in that September joint meeting, you'll probably see a lot of this again, just to make sure that when we are talking about affordable housing, workforce housing, we're all using the same words, the same definition. That is a big issue that I have seen in the past trying to talk about this ordinance because immediately when people think, when they hear affordable housing ordinance, they immediately go to Section Eight housing. And that's not the reality of the ordinances in the Center Region municipalities for the townships. So there's a lot of stereotypes out there. So there will be a lot of education being provided to board and planning commission. So you all have an even playing field, you're all operating with that same information. And then you have that as essentially backup when residents ask you about this. And you can speak eloquently about the issues that are facing Center Region.
So these aren't going to be like USDA, any PFA, those kind of loans? These are specific to the guidelines that are going to be for Patton Township?
So these, what we are going to be going towards is an ordinance for Patton Township. What that looks like, I don't know yet. Typically, if I've been at a place long enough, I have a good feel for the board and planning commission, what will fly, what won't. So here, I'm coming in blind. So there will be a lot of education. There's actually going to be a little interactive quiz just so I know where everyone's falling on the line for all of these issues because there is a lot of plug and play. But this ordinance, at least the ones that I am looking at, will be in relation to development.
So this won't be like FDA, you know, because FDA is a long program. What this is going to be is when, to pick on the ball pool, when he comes in to develop something, we have an ordinance that says X number of properties that you develop in that neighborhood or that you develop as a part of this development must meet XYZ AMI affordability standards.
And if I may, the 2021 Patton Township Housing Task Force did identify that a first-time homebuyer program would be really helpful in Patton Township, and I wholeheartedly agree with that. But that's something that would come next. This is kind of, we have to do things in a sequential order. And that would not be a loan, that would be in the way of a mortgage. That would be assistance to help bridge that gap for first-time homebuyers to be able to get into that first home. And then we would envision it, of course, we would have to defer to the elected officials here to set the policy on how they would want that to operate. But generally speaking, when municipalities have that type of a program, it's a self-renewal fund. So when that first-time homebuyer decides, "This house doesn't work for me anymore. I was, you know, single when I bought it, and now I'm married with children," or, you know, whatever the circumstance is, and then they decide to sell it, then the amount that the municipality provided them to get them in that home comes back to the municipality and goes back in that fund. So it continues to help the next person, the next person. So it's not, it's not going to be a mortgage program.
Right.
So it's essentially a lien program of where we're placing a lien on the house and...
What I know about the census data of Center Region, we have a lot of people with great-paying jobs that are highly educated with crippling student debt. So they, it seems that there just isn't enough for them to have that nest egg. And that's where a lot of these first-time homebuyer programs come into play, is providing that nest egg for these people.
And we wouldn't be putting a lien on, but what we would be doing is we would be entering into and closing a promissory note with a secondary mortgage. So if they refinanced, well, we have to, what's a mismorgue of saying, words are important.
Words are important.
Trust me, words are important. So it would be that silent second, they wouldn't be making payments on it while they lived in the home. But if they decided to refinance or sell their home, then they would.
So we already have these programs in place, and I have to say, they're very great programs. But how would that be different in Patton Township? Would we follow something like that that's already out there that lenders are giving our first-time homebuyers?
They could, they could. That's my, that would be, I shouldn't say that would be, that will be my recommendation. You know, we have a group of lenders here, local lenders, who have those programs, who have agreed to come in and help us so that everything can be seamless. And then we can get into nuances of, could they be stackable? Meaning if they qualify for the first-time benefits at their lender, then they could also qualify as a Patton Township resident and allow those to stack.
Right.
And then there's a county program also.
However, if you make too much, you won't qualify even if you are a first-time homebuyer.
Yeah, yeah. And I guess we'll know those guidelines as the time goes by.
Yep.
Yeah.
Just going back to my lien question, there's no risks of any discharge for that program through bankruptcy or anything such as that?
Those would all be policy decisions that you here in the municipality could make. Typically, they are not. Typically, you can write those to where you're protected. But that would be something that we'd be talking to the solicitor and to the board for a policy on that.
And I guess it would be a time limit, so many, your first-time people are coming in, January starts an open book, then we close it when we've maxed out our limit, I'm assuming. Yeah, okay.
Ideally, with development, if fee and lieu is an elected option for developers, that money could potentially be funded into that program. I think the biggest thing that I recognized with Ferguson was Pine Hall was coming in. We were going to get a big lump sum, and then that ordinance wasn't applicable anywhere else. So then it was a matter of, what do we want to use this money for? Because it is finite. Unless we change our ordinance, we're not getting more money. So then it's trying to figure out what program would work, given those scenarios.
And we'll take all of that into the different townships, you know, Half Moon, Patton Township, Ferguson, Snowshoe. I mean, would we make it all Center County or would it just be umbrellaed under Patton?
This ordinance will specifically be for Patton. I will say, College Township's ordinance, they have included, is it stolen, their reciprocation?
Yes, yes, that is stolen too.
Okay, yeah, so College Township, they have included a little section in their new ordinance that's currently being amended. Just having that reciprocation, if it is a Center Region, hopefully a Center Region municipality, I always have to think like a jerk and like, "Well, I don't want people designating houses all the way up in northern Center County and they're meeting the requirements." So we need to have some guidelines on that. I would prefer within the regional growth boundary. So if college's ordinance was triggered, the developer needs to build five affordable units. And there was another municipality that had that agreement in place, they could build in Patton if they had land here. They could. And then we have this shared goal, because the reality is affordable housing does not stop and end at Patton Township lines. It is Center Region-wide.
Right.
So we're trying to build in that flexibility through this land trust because we are managing that program for these municipalities. And that is a huge benefit if you are a local developer. Maybe you do have a bunch of land in Ferguson Township and you don't in College. And that's just more options that they're provided to make the ordinance a little more palatable, is what I like to put it. And I don't want to say that just this workforce housing ordinance, attainable housing ordinance, there we go again, is for development. There are so many tools in the toolbox to address attainable housing, from smaller lot sizes to ADUs, et cetera. So I don't want to say that this is, and we're doing this and then we're done. I think there is a lot of options out there that a lot of municipalities are looking at to increase that affordability issue that we are all seeing right now.
I've been advocating for regionalized cooperation in housing for about twenty, well, not about, for twenty-four years. And we are closer today than we have been ever in at least having the major pieces for the consumer, for the buyer, for the renter, to be the best scenario for them. Because to Jenna's point, we all live in the realm of maps and where the lines are and what do these rules mean. But I talk to people every week and they don't even know. I'll say, "Well, what municipality are you living in now?" And they don't even know. So when they're out looking for housing that they can afford for their family, it is frustrating to Jenna's point where someone can say, "Well, I qualified for workforce, still called a workforce unit in College Township, but now I don't, but it's only five minutes away." And it's like, "Well, that five minutes puts you into a different municipality." So we're really hopeful that each municipality can really explore and celebrate what makes that municipality different. But for the things that are really, really impactful for qualification purposes for the woman who just moved here or the gentleman who retired here, that it's easy for them to know. Here are the incomes, and that's going to be consistent at least within the Center Region.
So Jenna, are we able to, for example, bifurcate our rental permits in the Cog area? I.e., can we have rental permits for workforce housing versus student housing? Are we able to bifurcate those out?
In code world, no. They have a rental permit for a unit. So it falls on to the municipality to manage that. So for example, the rise downtown State College, there were inclusionary units included in that development. So within that land development plan, it was identified all of the inclusionary units. And it does fall on to the zoning officer, and in their case, they have a whole housing department because they have those federal funds to ensure that the individuals in that unit are meeting those AMI requirements. And that is a yearly renewal that they must go through to ensure that that is, I mean, that stays as an affordable unit. For Ferguson's ordinance, I thought that was all well and great, having this one unit affordable forever. But it's not reality with life. I mean, maybe the individual who qualified last year, they got a raise, that's awesome. And now they make too much. Are we going to kick them out of their unit? So there is the flexibility that I believe College has in place. I know Ferguson does of, okay, this individual doesn't qualify, this was our affordable unit, we're going to designate another unit in the building as the new affordable one. But it's going to be a lot of tracking and maintaining, but that is done by land trust. We receive all of that data from the property owners.
So then through zoning, we can say that X number of areas or X number of units have to be designated for?
Yep, whatever that AMI is. And then my favorite with developers, like, "You're telling us who we can and cannot rent to." I'm like, "You have a range, stay in it. I don't care if you put them all at the high end, I don't care if you put them all at the low end. This is your range, that's it. I'm not going to get into your business plan."
Well, you also didn't point to the construction worker inside, well, there you go.
Yeah, exactly.
You keep complaining that you don't have enough construction workers in the area.
There you go, yeah.
Use it to your advantage.
And we're seeing that in College Township. I don't know, Missy, how much you can talk about the units there?
In College Township, we have twenty-eight attainable units. There are ordinances that they were constructed under our so-called workforce units. And at that time, the College Township ordinance allowed for rentals to be up to sixty-five percent of the area median income. They didn't choose a sixty, eighty, or one twenty, they went with sixty-five. And it'd been that, I think we had done that revision back in two thousand and nine, I think it's when we, or two thousand and eleven, we had done that. So of those twenty-eight units, and they've been full, we're in our second leasing cycle and they are full. They are all professionals. It's not students trying to, you know, game the system because we do verify who's renting them. And we were somewhat, I was interested to see, what would the developer, what would the management company do with this range of up to sixty-five percent for twenty-eight units? So as the incomes came through and I was verifying them, and it's a blind verification, I don't know who the person is, where they were, I'm looking at the verifications, things are blacked out. I was really struck last year at the broad range of incomes. We didn't have a single renter last year in the last leasing cycle that was right at sixty-five percent. They were all below it. So I was like, "Okay, that's interesting. What was the first year? They were brand new." This is the Aspen State College, which is up on the hill on College Avenue, near the College Township building, where Hilltop Trail Park used to be. This year, we're full again, twenty-eight fully leased, twelve are renewals. We did have several people who had received different jobs and had moved beyond the income range and they had decided to live somewhere else. So that took care of those people that had gone up. But again, the incomes were not, they were not cherry-picking, only those top incomes. They had another broad range. And one of the incomes was dramatically lower than sixty-five percent AMI. We're talking, if this is sixty-five, they were down here. So I had to ask the question, just out of curiosity, what made you decide to provide a rental unit to this individual that now they are only going to be paying thirty percent of their much-reduced income to you, which is far below the cap, which means their monthly rent is... means their monthly rent is far below, as Jenna referenced, that fifteen hundred, they're all one-bedroom units? And what I learned was, well, we don't just look at one thing. We look at, yeah, we look at their income, we look at their credit, we look at their references, we look at where they're working. And this individual had started leasing from them after they were already full last year, and had been making, think about this, had been making that full freight payment every month to live there. And they were an outstanding tenant. So they said, of course, we wanted this person to, to pay the thirty percent of their income, because they're amazing people, but we don't just look at income. So a lot of times I will hear from developers or management companies, well, you're, to Jenna's point, well, you're telling me who I have to rent to. No, we don't. We say it can be up to this cap. They just can't earn more than that. And to our great surprise, happy surprise, we're seeing people in that development in College Township, who are paying thirty percent of their monthly income for housing, and they are not at the top. So that is very meaningful for them, to be able to save that.
So my next question is, how many units are we short?
How many units what?
Are we short?
Go back to that gap.
Rental or owner-occupied?
Yeah, which?
Let's just say, just short in general.
All right, well, this is owner-occupied housing, so this is broken out by the AMI ranges. So we're missing nine hundred and eighty-two units for individuals making between zero and fifty percent AMI, and then it escalates from there. It does dip down in that eighty-one to a hundred percent AMI, at eight fifteen. But that, that total for that line is what we are missing with affordable house ownership, homeownership in center region. And then this is the rental numbers.
Well, ain't that a kicking the teeth?
One of the reasons for these gaps, that the, that the company that was hired to do this, M&amp;L Associates, and they're, they're one of the best in the country that did this study, they were surprised by some of the gaps. So what they learned through their, their research is, there are a lot of units that are affordable to people in these income ranges that we're looking at. There are people who are earning far more than a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income, who are buying those or renting those. If they're buying them, a lot of them, they're buying them and they're flipping them, or they're holding on to them as investments, getting rental permits for them. And then for the rentals, they, however it's happening, I don't know, but they're coming in because there's not a lot of rentals for them in their price range. So they are coming in, and they're renting some of the lower income, based upon price points, what would be affordable for those. And all of us in housing were like, yes, we know this. But it was interesting, because we had a work session with the commissioners, and the commissioners were really surprised by that. And all of us in housing said, this has been happening for, for many, many years. We'd had a workshop, I think it was in March of two years ago, it's on CNET, where they were really surprised that people would be spending lower than what the charts say they can spend on their housing. It's like, well, because they, they can, and they did. So it's kind of icing them out on both ends. Either you can't afford it because it's too expensive, or there just are no units available. And that could be with someone who starts at this level of income, and they're in an apartment, and they stay there. They think, oh, I'm only going to be here for a year or two, and they stay there for ten years. And their income continues to rise, and their rent stays here. So there's a whole lot of factors to that, but that's one of the factors that goes into We need a lot of units. That's what the gap is telling us. We need a lot more units, that are not student units.
That's the other issue with center region. We have the student housing market that is in competition with what we are calling the workforce, and people who are no longer students, trying to live and work here.
So the building where the radio station is, that's going to be affordable, right?
Yeah.
This, oh, Senior? Okay, I wasn't sure if that's Senior.
Yeah. Ara, so Ara Karanjan, he does a lot of Lytech properties, so that is a federal, federal money that he receives to do those types of developments. He did one in Ferguson Township, West Cherry Lane.
Yep.
Near TGI Fridays. So that is a separate program, similar to the Borough. He has requirements that he needs to meet, because the federal government is giving him that money to provide. In most instances with Ara, it's typically low-income elderly housing.
Sure.
I would say, he did a lot of the Stonebridge development, too.
What is the wait time to get into a place like, say, on College Avenue?
For the inclusionary units?
Yeah.
So the Borough's ordinance, there's a lot of nuances to that. They, the way that they set up their ordinance, and a lot of it had to do with the student housing market, at least in my time there, the ordinance required like units to be built as the market rate. So in those student housing developments, they are building five-bedroom units, four, three, two. They all share a kitchen. So the Borough's ordinance, because it recognized that this was going to be student housing, and they do define student housing in their zoning ordinance, each individual unit is a standalone. So if this unit total is meeting the fifty percent AMI requirement, all tenants, when you put them in there, if it's a five-unit, if it's a five-bedroom unit, when you add up their AMIs together, total, they cannot go over, which was a big issue the Borough had, trying to get individuals into the units, because they would have someone making thirty, and someone at twenty, and now the unit's at fifty percent.
Yeah.
And so it was really hard to try to make that work. We did do an amendment before I left, through the conditional use process, so we wouldn't get big units built, like the five-bedroom, the four-bedroom, if the developer would provide justification to, there isn't a need for a five-bedroom workforce or inclusionary unit at fifty percent AMI, but there is a need for one five-bedrooms. They could do that through that process, if they wanted to. So it's a lot, a lot of these ordinances are trial and error. When I took Ferguson's to CRPC, I know a lot of individuals from Patton Township, they were used to the large phasing plans that Patton and Ferguson see. So the Turnberry Development on Blue Course, we call it Turnberry if you're staff, because that's on their plan, I think it's The Heights now, that is supposed to have affordable units built in. And because the ordinance didn't specify the phasing plan of when they needed to be provided, all of the affordable units were pushed out to the last phase. So it, we learn as we go through a lot of these ordinances, and I think we're really close to the point where we found just about every loophole that a developer can use with these ordinances, and trying to address those needs, while also recognizing the development community, they have performance that they have to meet. And if all the units for the workforce or attainable housing units are required upfront, that's going to kill their development in the long run. So it is a balance, it one hundred percent is, and it's trying to find that sweet spot for both sides.
If they're the ones up there at the end, they can put it all up front next time. There you go. Keep trying.
Yep.
I'm tracking them.
Those units.
Well, can I ask you to be here each time we have a new development coming up? And you can speak publicly and shame those people that have done that.
If, if there is, if there is an attainable housing ordinance in place, then the answer to that is yes. I do attend the planning commission meetings when there are developments coming through that involve the attainable housing, absolutely.
Well, in this case, I would ask that, even if we don't have anything, if you're able to show up on a developer that has attainable units that are on the last phase, please come and tell us.
I see, I see.
Tell us.
In the, in the Center County Government webpage, the entirety, and it is a large document, of the Center County Housing Needs Assessment, it is on their website, on their website. And I really, I, I know, it's probably not the most riveting reading, but it really does have a lot of fascinating information. But if you go to the back of it, one of the appendices, it does list, when we're talking about tax credit-supported developments, there is a list in the back of that study of every one of those, and their rentals, that are in Center County, and when those tax credits expire. So it's a good thing to look at and say, well, when are these large developments? There's, there's quite a few of them, like on Wapalani Drive, and when those expire, then those go to market rate. So those are already existing affordable units that will be gone forever. So that's another part, when we're looking at the attainable housing, or affordable, if we're looking at that umbrella, where we're looking at everyone under the umbrella, that's another thing that we in housing really pay attention to. When are those going to come off of the affordability?
And where do we find that?
If you go to the Center County, just Center County Government website, and I know that it's under Planning and Community Development, I'm sure, Jenna, could you send, you could probably send them a link to it?
Yeah, and it was also included in their needs assessment, because that's where I found it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's in that study. It's in that needs assessment.
And that influenced a lot of the amendments for Ferguson, because there were a few of those Lytech units that were coming offline from being affordable. And so part of meeting that requirement, if the developer didn't want to build them, they could designate other units. Now, in that instance, they can't designate a unit that's already affordable, but if they were to be coming offline in a year or so, then like, we're going to maintain these as affordable. The board would have that ability to say, yes, we approve of that, to keep that affordable.
And the Housing Needs Assessment is another neat tool to look at. We worked on it, the consultants worked with, so, I mean, there were hundreds of people that were involved in that, being interviewed, and, and I mean, we started it during COVID, so a lot of Zoom meetings, and a lot of things like that. But it's really interesting to take a look at, and I've, and I've encouraged College Township to do this as well, to take a look at the other market regions, because they broke the county up into different regions. And just take a look and see, for many, many years, it seemed like only the center region was, was struggling with the affordability. But if you take a look at that twenty twenty-three needs assessment, you'll see that every part of our county is now impacted and affected, and it's not for the better. So at the Center County Housing and Land Trust, something that we do, every board meeting, we take a look at what's the trending data, the actual hard data across every school district. What's happening in Scasdi? What's happening in Bellefonte? What's happening in Phillipsburg-Golsiolo? What's happening in Bald Eagle? What's happening in Benz Valley? To see where are those trends, and they are all trending up. And right now, Bellefonte, that region, is outperforming on cost increases the center region. Not price yet, but when you look at the percentages of increase, they are now seeing the massive explosion. So it's just, it's, it's getting out of control.
Well, thank you. Any other comments from the planning commission?
I have one.
Mm-hmm.
Just want to emphasize that the Patton Township Housing Task Force report came out in twenty twenty-one. We're now in twenty twenty-four. And it took, I don't know, two or three years to get the task force to do up and running, so.
One positive that I can share from the, it was one of the slides, from the recommendations from the task force, I can tell you that we were able to check one of the, one of the boxes off, because we were able to acquire a home for, in partnership with Habitat, through the funding that the Patton Township supervisors provided through the ARPA money. And so there's a, a young mom with her son, that's now a resident of Patton Township because of the task force recommendation and the acceptance by the council. So we're, we're trying, we're trying, but it, like I said, I've been trying to get things for thirty years.
I have a question. How much federal monies is going untapped by us? Like, how many programs are out there, federal or state, that we may not be taking advantage of? Can we get that information?
Well, from, from the federal, from the federal, there's, Patton Township is not an entitlement community, according to HUD. So we're not eligible in Patton Township to get any of those home funds that are just automatically provided to, to address housing. We, we're not eligible for that. No other municipality in the center region, besides the Borough, is eligible for that.
Second class.
I'm sorry?
We're second class, that's why.
Oh.
Yeah, the entitlement, that is solely based on income.
Income.
Of your residence. So you could be a second-class township, maybe outside of Philly or Pittsburgh, and be in entitlement community, and receive those federal dollars automatically. Unfortunately, I don't think any other municipality in center region has what HUD calls bans to meet that requirement in order to be in entitlement community, except the Borough. And I think Bellefonte, no.
I've heard that Bellefonte has met that threshold, but I haven't seen that officially, but we've heard the, we've heard that, you know, you hear the whispers, that Bellefonte may be, based upon some late, you know, later data, that they may be an entitlement community. So from the home foundation, from the home funds, you're not eligible for that, because Patton Township is not an entitlement community. From the state perspective, that gets tricky, because there are funds that can be available to municipalities from the Commonwealth, but many times, they are extremely limited in what those monies can be used for. For example, blight remediation, those types of programs are out there. Municipalities can partner with nonprofits, and go through competitive grant programs to, to try to get some state money that is also federal flow-through money that comes to the state. So instead of the federal government directly sending it to the Borough, they send monies also to the Commonwealth, and then the Commonwealth will have through PHFA, they will have, or DCED, they will have a competitive grant process. The problem with that is, most of those programs, you have to have the, you know, the shovel-ready project with already matching funds, and a lot of municipalities, A, just don't have the funding to do that in their general budget, or B, they don't have the desire to become a developer. So it's, it's really complicated. If you're in a larger, if you're in a larger city, it's easier, because they can have, even if they're not an entitlement community, they have more ability to have more staffing within the municipality and those types of things. But we are, from the Center County Housing and Land Trust, we are exploring all of those, all of those nuances. When Jenna was saying this House Bill thirteen eighty-six, why are we all now trying to say attainable housing, attainable housing? That's going to be an avenue where municipalities can apply for grant money, if you are a municipality that has adopted an attainable housing, has to be called attainable housing ordinance, and then you've met some other parameters, you know, ADUs are addressed, and some things like that. So those are all things that we're going to look at. But right now, it's really, really tough to be able to get any of those federal state dollars, unless you're one of those entitlement communities. It's tough. All of the nonprofits, we try. We write the grants, we try, we try to get, we try to get, to get those.
And then another question we have, so it wouldn't be in regards to rental, affordable rentals, but it would be in regards to affordable purchasing of homes. Everything within the school borough has outrageous property taxes, and that's because nobody's renting in the school book, the school board. Is, I mean, I think that's a huge factor, because when you start, even if somebody somehow manages to, you know, if there's a program and an ordinance, and, and they, they qualify for everything, their property taxes are going to continually go up every single year. I mean, how do we put that horse back in the shed?
Good question.
I mean, because when, when you're out in Julian, or if you're out in Port Matilda, or you're in, you know, several other areas on the outskirts, you don't have those kinds of property taxes, you also don't have those kinds of services, and that's why, part of it, but mostly, it's the school district that's running the show.
I'm going to share.
You know? So, I mean- So I mean, I think that's something that needs to be kind of in the formula, if it's possible.
I don't think it is for us.
It will be included in, I mean, HUD, that 30% AMI includes taxes, so it is the taxes of that region. So that is part of that calculation, you are right, those Scasdi's taxes.
Well, they used to have to, they used to have to get approval for substantial increases. They had, like, limited amounts of increases that they could put. And then, for some reason, there was a referendum out there, about, what, about 15, 18 years ago?
Yeah.
And it just took away any restrictions. And all we've seen is things go up and up and up. So, I mean, when you're talking purchasing a house, you know, anything that's in the school district, that's a huge, that, that affects.
That's why it's important when we're looking at what those 30% total that HUD says is allowable, we need to remember that that also includes, if it's an owner, it also has to include their homeowner's insurance and their property taxes. So when they're working with their lender, I mean, you can, you can just see how that starts to chip away at that, because that's what they have to use for the qualifications, because all verify, are they at 30%? And that's total, all in. So to your point, it does get, it does get really difficult in the, in certain school districts to be able to, to do that. I guess everyone got their tax bills today, like I did.
Oh, yeah.
I was going to just say.
It came today. But you know, one question that I had raised in another municipality some time ago, and I shared it, so I will just share this with you, and then we can be, because I think, I can tell people are starting to nudge around in your seat a little bit. People were looking, a lot of the, how much savings per month is it? What's meaningful? What's a meaningful discount? And we just shared that sometimes we have to be really careful when we're looking at ordinances and black and white, and what does it look like, that we don't, that we don't impose what we think is meaningful across the board, and think that that's the blanket. Because I was talking with, with a household, and their savings was not going to be what I would have thought was meaningful. But for them, what made it meaningful to them, that they were able to get this reduction in their, and it was a mortgage, in their mortgage, was that it allowed them to get into the state college area school district, because they had a child that had needs to be met. And they could have stayed living where they were, and, but it was, their meaningful was not just the dollars and cents, it was the services that they were going to be able to receive. And also, they were able to get rid of one of their vehicles, because then they could use transportation in the center region that they couldn't, where they were living before. And I have to tell you, I've been doing this for a really long time, and I was so grateful, because that was the upside the head, to be like, wait a second, ask the question, you know, what is this going to mean for you? So as we start to embark on this journey, there's going to be a lot of confusion about words, we're going to mess up, I'm going to call it attainable, then I'm going to call it workforce, just, I'm going to like, do a rubber band, I'm going to snap myself. But let's just try to not lose sight, that we really just want to provide a community where people feel like they can belong, and they can find a place for themselves to live. That's really what we need to keep in focus, I think. But maybe on Pollyanna, so, that's what I do, that's what I, that's what I look at every day.
We're going to have to be a developer.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I think that was a very nice overview, and we'll look forward to having that joint meeting in September. Status report on pending items, we have none. Other business, there's no action items. A note from the Board of Supervisors, June 12th meeting. Anyone have any other comments before we have a motion to adjourn? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Some of it.
Can I have a second?
I saw that.
Okay. We are adjourned.
It's time for baseball.